All set? Okay, I think we're ready to go. Good evening. This is a regularly scheduled meeting of the Wilmeth zoning board of appeals. Ms. Roberts, will you please call the roll a little?
Mr. Felkoff.
Here.
Mr. Colain.
Here.
Mr. Sermon.
Here.
Chairman Schneider.
Here.
This meeting is being conducted remotely via Microsoft Teams. For those watching this video in the future, the state of Elmwood is currently under a stay-at-home order issued by Governor J.B. Pritzker due to the coronavirus global pandemic. As a result, all in-person governmental meetings have been canceled. However, the Open Meetings Act now permits electronic meetings of governmental bodies like the appeals. And this evening, we're conducting our business in compliance with the state law. As usual, this meeting is being broadcast live on our local cable access channel six. And it's also being broadcast on the internet, on YouTube Live, and on URL. So that is www.youtube.com/user/villageofwilmeth/live. Participate in the meeting. You can join through Microsoft Teams. Visit the village's website at www.wilmeth.com and find the calendar event for the zoning board meeting. There's a link for you to join the meeting. You will also find the meeting in the center and case reports under the calendar. Alternatively, you can view the meeting on channel six or on YouTube and call in to the meeting, allowing you to listen and speak using your telephone. The phone number is 872-239-8225. Tonight's meeting code is 602-413-1555. You may also submit your comments through YouTube Live, in the team chat, and emails to cand@wilmeth.com. A member of the village staff will read your comment to the village board. All comments to the zoning board of appeals will be recorded in the minutes, in the meeting minutes, as we typically do. For our meeting guests, for our meeting guests joining by team, when you are not speaking, please keep your device muted to minimize disruptions of the proceedings. For those of you new to our proceedings, the purpose of this board is to hear evidence and applications for variances from our zoning ordinance and on applications for special use. Based on the evidence we hear this evening, we will make recommendation to the village board of trustees whether the applications that come before us this evening should be granted or denied. We will vote to recommend granting or denying each application for variation based on whether the applications meets the standards of review as forced in section 5.4.1F of our village ordinance. Applications for special use will be considered based on whether the standards of review set forth in section 5.3.1E of our village ordinance are met. The village board of trustees will consider the recommendations we make this evening at their next regularly scheduled meeting on August 25. Our recommendations to the board are advisory only. The village board has the final say on all applications and will make its own determination as to whether to grant or deny them. The village board is not legally bound by our recommendations. If this board makes a negative recommendation with respect to an application, in order for the village board of trustees to approve that application, a super majority of five village board members must vote to approve it rather than a simple majority of four. There is another small peculiarity to our proceedings of which you should be aware. This board does not operate by majority vote. We operate instead by what is called a tyranny of four. In other words, no matter how many board members are present on a given evening, in order to get a positive recommendation from this board, an application must receive four affirmative votes. Now, since I see only four, ordinarily, the board consists of seven members, but tonight I see we have only four so far. Maybe a fifth member will join us. Ms. Roberts obviously sits tonight as an advisor capacity only and is not a voting member of the board. So you should know that you need all four of us to vote in favor of your application tonight. And anything less than that would be a negative recommendation. In recognition of this feature of our procedure, we do not have all the members of board present on any given evening. We give the applicants who are scheduled to come before us that night, tonight, the option of requesting a continuance to the next available date on our schedule. The next available date for any applicant who would like to request a continuance this evening is September 2nd. There's no penalty for taking, for asking for a continuance. No such request will be held against you when your case is eventually heard. If you wish to ask for a continuance, however, you must do so at the beginning of your presentation before making any substantive arguments as to the merits of your case. Please also be aware that if you request a continuance, there's no guarantee as to how many board members will be present on the evening to which your case is continued. The cases we should hear this evening will be heard in the orders set forth on the published agenda. When your case is called, please state your name and address and tell us exactly why your application meets the standards of review that are applicable to it. Each member of this board is a longtime resident of the village and has visited your property during the past week. In addition, we have received from the village staff a report containing all written information that you have submitted in support of your application as well as other correspondence that the village has received. Accordingly, it is not necessary that you repeat what you have already stated in writing. Please just hit high points with particular attention to why you believe your application meets the standards of review. After the applicant has had a chance to speak, we will open the floor to others who wish to speak on the application. I will recognize each attendee to ask if you have any comment, so please wait to be called. Everyone will be permitted to have their say, but we would ask that you keep your comments as short and to the point as possible. Any comments received through the YouTube chat, team chat, or email will be read into the record at that time. After we have heard all oral presentations, I will close the evidence, and the members of the board will discuss what they have heard and take a vote. Once the evidence is closed, no further testimony on an application may be offered. The only people entitled to speak during that part of the proceedings will be the members of the board. This meeting is a legal proceeding, and all testimony tonight must be given under oath. If you are planning to testify tonight, I would ask you to raise your right hand. It is time to be sworn. Even if I don't see you, I assume you're raising your right hand, whoever wants to testify. And I will ask you, do you swear or affirm that you will tell the truth in the testimony that you are about to give? If so, please say, "I do."
I do.
Thank you. Ms. Roberts, I think we can hear the first case.
Our first case is 2020-Z21-1305 Sheridan Road. We have a revised request. A revision went out to you yesterday. The revised request is for a 322.85 square foot rear yard improvement, impervious surface coverage variation to permit a new driveway. The applicant, as well as the neighbors, are here, and I see John is queued up, ready to go.
Good evening, everyone. I'll keep this short. We'd like to request a continuance and appear at the September 2nd meeting, please.
Okay. That is acknowledged, but I think we need to vote on that continuance. Can I have a motion?
Sure. This is Bob Sermon. I move to continue case number 2020-C-21 to September...
Second.
Second.
Oh, second.
Okay, it is moved and seconded. I think we can call a vote, Ms. Roberts.
I'm sorry, who was the second?
Me, Ryrie.
Thank you.
Oh, Ryrie has joined. Oh, there he is.
Mr. Felkoff.
Yes.
Mr. Colain.
Yes.
Mr. Pellicle.
Yes.
Mr. Sermon.
Yes.
Chairman Schneider.
Yes.
So that this case is continued to September 2nd. Thank you very much.
Everybody, thank you. Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm Gary Hollander. I'm the lawyer for Patricia Garretson. We're agitating now. We were here for that hearing. We obviously have no objections have been put over, so I'm just letting you know we are. We're going to leave the meeting now. Thanks, Gary.
Thank you.
Talk to you later. Thank you, John. Yeah, I'll talk to you soon.
Bye.
Can we, I think we can go to the next case, Ms. Roberts.
Yes. Our next case is 2020-Z22-1111 Sheridan Road. This is a request for a special use for unusual recreation equipment, a 17.8-foot rear yard of a double frontage lot setback variation, and a 180.99 square foot rear yard of a double frontage lot impervious surface coverage variation to permit the retention of a seasonal batting cage. And I believe the applicants are here.
Yes, can you hear me okay?
Please state your address, please.
Sure. This is Charles Hattis. I'm at 1111 Sheridan Road. My wife Daisy is here as well.
We can't see you. I can't see you anyway.
Daisy is there. I can't see a picture. Daisy is there. Okay. Do you have any video? I do have video. I can shoot myself on the bottom right, but I don't know. I guess it only lets you show nine squares at a time. But actually, I've got a PowerPoint that I created that I think will summarize that everybody would be able to see. Let me know if you can see this. That I can kind of speak to it.
Let me just say, this is Brad Felkoff. Before you start, Mr. Hattis, I just want to make one disclosure. And Chairman Reinhardt, I wanted to just simply let the record reflect that there is, on this particular case, at least one person who has expressed an objection, and that's Mr. Cliff Shapiro. I just wanted to let the applicants know in advance that I've known Mr. Shapiro for close to about 20 years. Until I retired, I was a partner in the same law firm as Mr. Shapiro, and he is a friend of mine. I don't think it'll impact my view of this case, but I wanted to certainly let the applicants know that in advance of their presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Felkoff. The applicant, please proceed.
Sure. So I just wanted to first kind of summarize the points that we think would justify a variance, and then I'd like to address the points that were raised in opposition of the variance behind this. So first reason we think it's warranted is it's a temporary and a seasonal structure. Temporary in that, if you wanted to have a wedding out on our lawn tomorrow at noon, we could take the thing down and have a wedding tomorrow noon. Everything comes out of the ground. It is very temporary. Seasonal, the item cannot withstand snow and leaves, so you need to take the netting down. You need to take everything down when it's not in season, so it is seasonal as well. The second point is that it's got a finite lifespan. It will come down the sooner of either when my son loses interest in baseball or when he goes off to college. So he's in high school now, so this is not going to be up forever. Number three is it sits in our backyard. Our address is 1111 Sheridan. It's not 1111 Elmwood. We have a dual-access lot, and that's why we put it where we put it. Noise is infrequent and short in duration. When you're hitting, it's tiring to sit in the cage and hit for a long time, so usually one child will throw to the other child, and they'll switch and throw, and about 15 minutes later, they've gone on to do something else. Number five, it's consistent with precedent in the neighborhood. I've seen many temporary batting cages, temporary hockey rinks, sport courts, et cetera. And I think this is probably the most important point. This is supported by six of the seven neighbors, which formally express an opinion one way or the other. Two of those are the neighbors that are in the adjoining yards. The only opposition is from the neighbor that's across the street. So then, now I'd like to address the points that were put out in opposition. So the first argument is it's in the front yard. It's in the front yard because we have a dual-frontage lot. Building on Sheridan is not an option for us because of the way the lot is structured. Our backyard is our front yard, which is basically just one yard. The second point raised in opposition is that there are other cages nearby that we could drive to. Our son is, he's not yet driving, so that's not an option. There's also basketball and hockey courts and facilities nearby as well, but you see many neighbors around the neighborhood that install basketball courts and hockey near their homes for convenience and for excellence. The third point raised is that it is loud and detrimental to comfort. It was pointed out that there's music speakers there and that the music is loud, and I would say that those speakers have been there for the three years that we've lived there, and there's been no noted problems. You know, the bat noise, again, is infrequent. The cage is not used as much as I'd actually like it to be used, and when it is used, it is used for short durations. And then, you know, if somebody desires silence, you know, there's neighbors that do have access to backyards. You know, our neighbor across the street's got a beautiful backyard. If I had his yard, that's where I would have built my cage, but if there's a desire for silence, you know, that option is available there. The last argument was made around diminishing property value, and my point to that is that's speculative opinion. You know, there's some that might argue that it enhances the value. If there's people moving up from the city that are families, they might view having families and yards and things to do in people's homes as attractive, and it might make it a family-friendly neighborhood. So I don't think that that's conclusive. So those are the points that we're raising for both... Let me just present here. So those are both kind of the pros and our responses to the opposition to the temporary batting cage. Do you have any other points you wanted to add to that?
No, I think the only thing that I could think of is, I believe you covered, but the ground is not, it's not impervious. It's just the lawn.
Thank you very much. Go ahead.
Oh, no, I was just going to say, and I'm pretty sure you guys have seen the measurements, which is under the 15 feet, et cetera, et cetera. It's all in the documents.
I think we've all been there. Any questions for the applicant?
Yeah, where is the entrance, the front entrance to your house? On what street?
You could enter it either way. You could enter from Sheridan, or you could enter from Elmwood. There's a sidewalk, and it comes from both sides. All deliveries come in from Sheridan.
The front door. Our front door is...
That's what I'm trying to determine, the front door.
The front door is actually, it's a variant, it's a point. So our front door is actually facing Bahai. It's actually facing, I wish I could describe it. If you could pull it up.
Southeast. It's a pie-shaped lot, and the front door points to the point of the pizza slice.
Okay. Any other questions for the applicant?
Yeah. Do you have a, is there like a pitching machine, or is it just one baseball player throwing it to somebody else? It's a person throwing to somebody else behind an L screen. And this picture's on the applicant, the application. I can also probably project one here if that would be of any value.
Go ahead. And then, my first question is, I'm not sure, why can't you use the batting cage that is located at Thornwood Park?
Okay, so the point was made that you could drive to Thornwood Park. So that's, I think, an eight-minute drive, according to the opponent. The other location he noted was a 20-minute drive. When you've got a 15-year-old son, that's not an option for them to get in the car and drive to those parks. Yeah, those are options, but not a practical one.
You could bicycle over there if you wanted to use the Thornwood Park.
But it's hard to go there if you're carrying a bucket of baseballs and baseball bats and helmets. So I would argue that you'd have to have special equipment on your bike to be able to do that, but I guess theoretically, it is possible, yes.
And as I understand it, you have what is classified by the village as a double-frontage lot? So it really has two front yards?
It's got two entrances. At the front yard, if you look at the diagram, the topographical diagram, you'll see that, you know, 80% of the usable space is on the Elmwood side and about 20% is on the Sheridan side. So I guess, you know, technically, those are both yards.
All right. I mean, you've called it a backyard, but it is by the village identified as a double-frontage lot?
Yeah, that's a tendency. I don't know. I can debate. You know, we basically have one yard, and that's where it is.
To follow up on that, Brad, if you just, give me a second. Lisa, in the case of a double-frontage lot, where is the backyard?
Well, there's, on this lot, there's no particular backyard. The...
The petitioner, in this case, doesn't have a backyard batting plate?
Right.
There's none other option, yeah.
The front yard is on the Sheridan side, and then the rear yard, double-frontage lot, is on the Elmwood side, which is treated like a front yard for purposes of setbacks and coverage.
Okay, I'm sorry, Brad.
No, it's okay. Are there any other batting cages right now in Wilmeth, in people's yards, front or back?
Is that question for me, or? Yes. I did tell you several of them.
All right. Are any of them in the front?
Is that question to, who's the question answerer?
Yeah, the question was whether any of those batting cages are in front fronts. That's still put in the petition area.
I don't know how you would qualify something as a front or backyard. The one that I saw was right off of a garage, so I don't know if that's a front yard or a backyard or a garage.
And one other question.
You can see it on Wilmeth Avenue.
All right. One other question I had is, was any effort made to investigate the village's zoning ordinance before installing the batting cage?
No, because I didn't know a temporary item like that would require any information. That's why I put it up.
Actually, I looked online, and I saw, because I saw that the parameters were impervious. X number of feet from your property line, and we're double, triple that minimum. And additionally, it had to be less than 15 feet high, which this is less than 15 feet high. So with those three aspects in mind, how far it is from all of our lot line, and it also had to be X number of feet from the home, and again, it was double, triple distance from the footprint, from the actual wall of our house. That's, I had researched that, and I thought, well, we're certainly none of those things, so it sounds like we could do it.
Okay. Those are my questions. Thank you.
Okay. This is Bob Sermon, and I have a couple of questions for Lisa. Lisa, if this was put in a backyard, would they require a variance? Are you there, Lisa?
Yeah, sorry, I was having trouble. They would not...
If it was on a standard lot?
Right. They probably wouldn't need the setback relief, but I think the size and scope of this particular structure is such that we would still call it out as needing a special use.
Okay. And then what about current residents? Do they, when they put a large trampoline in their backyard, does that require a variance? Because I would say that would create just as much noise if you've got a bunch of kids jumping and screaming.
And it's probably taller.
Yeah.
Yeah, generally, trampolines are truly portable. They're not attached to the ground in any way. I don't know that we've ever been asked about a, like a permanently installed one, so we really can't regulate something that you could just pick up and move.
So Mike, Bob, to follow up on that a little bit, because I had the same thought, and that is, I think that Mr. Hattis made reference to hockey rinks. And there are some that are simple, that are a foot or two tall, that are permanently affixed into the ground. But there are many others that have boards, lights, et cetera, that are substantially, take up much more of the lot than the batting cage would, that are impervious. And I don't know of any instance in the village where a person who put up a backyard or front yard, I've seen plenty of them in front yards, hockey rinks, one on Washington Avenue jumps to mind right away, that have required village permission. Is my understanding of that correct, Lisa? Or are people getting permits for backyard, front yard hockey rinks?
No, you are correct that the village generally does not enforce anything on the temporary seasonal hockey things that you see, the plastic and the boards, the low boards, you know, front yard, backyard.
Is that because they're seasonal?
I think it's because they're seasonal. They're probably even used less than, you know, during the full season. Most of the time, I think people do not have lights. Certainly, lights raise the stakes a bit in terms of the impact on the neighbors. There are so many people that do it. I think the village has just decided that it's not something that they want to pursue, but I could certainly see the other side of that as well, that they can be problematic, particularly when you have lights up.
Yeah, I would think that in terms of lights and noise equivalence and size, the hockey rink seems somewhat more problematic than a baseball cage, a batting cage. And so I interrupted Mr. Sermon, and I want to let him get back to his point, but I want to follow up later with Mr. Hattis about the seasonal aspect of this.
I would say, I just want to comment on trampolines. We've got a trampoline in the backyard. It's got to be a dozen, 12 feet in diameter. You know, it's taller. You have to, you know, climb to get onto it. It's got fencing, and that is not a, you know, a seasonal piece of equipment. You know, my kids are grown now, and now we got to get rid of it, and you can't even easily take it apart. So I think there's a big difference that that is a difference. And I think with this case, I mean, it's a very unusual-shaped lot, and it looks like the one to the south is almost just a triangle. I mean, they're a really unique shape, so I think it really is a hardship. I guess the only comment, because the neighbor that did disagree with this, you know, sent several videos to us, and what I noticed on the video was just a high pitch, and that's due to aluminum bats. So, you know, an easy way to maybe mitigate the situation is to switch to wooden bats. You wouldn't have that high tone that was probably exemplified in the video. That would be my only comment. But I think it's important that it could be, you know, it's not like the park district ones that are put in with, you know, large posts into the ground. It's a temporary structure. That's all I'd say.
Comment also, we don't have any lights, so it's not used at night. It's only used during day hours.
Okay. Well, then, could you tell us, in terms of the seasonal aspect of it that you referenced earlier, when does it get erected during the year, and when does it come down approximately?
Yeah, I would say when it's warm enough to be outside playing baseball, so probably like, you know, late March, early April is probably when it would go up, and it would come down when the leaves start falling, because they would start collecting on the net and weighing it down, and it usually starts getting cold about then to be outside hitting anyway, so that's about when it would come down.
Okay. Any other questions? Lisa, can you spend a moment about why this is deemed to be an impervious surface?
Yeah, I can be persuaded that it's not, because we're counting it as a structure. I did count it as coverage, but obviously, it's very... it's very open. Uh, unlike the previous, uh, batting cage that we had a few years ago, this does not have any, any surface to it. Um, so I wouldn't, um, I wouldn't get hung up on that because, um, I, I think it's arguably not an impervious surface. There you go.
Yeah, I think the only coverage is, sorry to interrupt, Lisa, is the, uh, the mat that the batter stands on.
Yeah, yeah.
And that's minimal.
I don't know if you're able to see that picture. I'm, I'm trying to project, but that'll give you an idea what it'll look like.
Yeah, I, I don't have a problem with considering, you know, with removing that from the application if that is, is a good concern, because it really isn't functioning like a pervious, impervious surface.
Okay, any other, any other question, excuse me, for the applicant? Hearing none, is, is there anyone that would like to apply on this case? Uh, I don't know, Lisa, if you've heard from anyone, uh, via various media?
Uh, we don't have anybody on email, and I don't believe we have anybody, um, in, in our, um, in our meeting. But, uh, Mr. Shapiro did ask me to read a statement, um, which I would like to do. Uh, it was a bit lengthy, if you'll bear with me if you're ready.
Sure.
Okay. Um, he writes, "I am sorry, I am not able to attend the hearing in person this evening because my wife's father passed away unexpectedly. Thank you for reading this statement. The last thing I want to do is make this statement. I have absolutely no desire to be adverse to my neighbors. My family has lived in our house for twenty-eight years, and we have always had great relations with our neighbors. I really enjoy sharing friendly waves with my neighbors and joining them on a patio or porch for a drink and a chat, particularly during the summer months when we are all able to be outside. But I feel I have no choice but to speak out tonight. My new neighbors built a full-size batting cage in the yard directly across the street from my house, and they are now asking the village to grant them the right to use this batting cage every year from March to October. The yard where the batting cage now stands, twelve feet tall, is located on Elmwood Avenue. I know the yard technically is called a quote, "rear yard of a double frontage lot", but it is my understanding that the village treats this kind of yard as a front yard, for example, for coverage limits and allowable encroachments, even though it is not technically a quote, "front yard". Of course, this only makes sense because the yard at issue directly faces Elmwood Avenue, just like all the other front yards on the street. I think we can all agree that it is very unusual to have a full-size batting cage in a residential yard in Wilmette. It simply is not something we typically find on our residential lots. I think it is also fair to say that this batting cage, which was built without first obtaining the necessary permits, is not consistent with the character of the neighborhood. It is very, it is a very large structure that takes up virtually the entire yard. It creates unusual visual impact and unusual noise impact. It is not in keeping with how others in the neighborhood typically use their yards, front or rear. I know the house across the street does not have a regular backyard, and my family is sympathetic to that fact. For twenty-eight years, our neighbors across the street have used that yard with their families, and we have never had a problem. One family lived in the house for many years with five kids and two very large dogs. They romped around the yard and made all the noise a large family makes, and we had no problems with that at all. Other families similarly use the yard in various ways with young children and high school-aged children, and we completely understood and happily tolerated whatever noise occurred. Our prior neighbors also always kept the yard facing Elmwood Avenue attractive, including adding some pretty extensive landscaping work that made the yard more beautiful. Of course, this benefited the entire neighborhood. The new batting cage that was erected is completely different in size, scope, appearance, and noise level from anything that came before. In addition to the full-size batting cage, a new powerful outdoor speaker was installed. We are tolerant people and have no desire to interfere with how our neighbors use their property. But there is and must be a limit, in our opinion, this batting cage is simply over the line. We truly have not been able to be on our front porch at various times, including times when the batting noise was accompanied by the new loudspeaker. The video clips we submitted show what it is like to be on our front porch when the batting cage is in use. The last thing we ever wanted to do was take video of our neighbors, but we felt we had no choice, as this is the only way to show what it is like to be on our front porch when the batting cage is in use. In fact, the videos do not show how loud things really are. It is also very hard to get away from the noise, because we can hear the batting even when we are in our backyard or inside our house. We might be more willing to try to live with the noise and the unsightly structure across the street if there really was a need for a full-size batting cage in that yard, but we just can't come to that conclusion. As we explained in our written submission, there is a free batting cage located a few minutes away in Thornwood Park. That batting cage can be used anytime, and it can be used safely during the pandemic. There are still more batting cage facilities in the area less than twenty minutes away. The petition suggests that the COVID pandemic somehow created a need for a personal batting cage, but we do not understand how it makes sense during the pandemic for groups of young people to get together across the street to take batting practice without social distancing, which is what occurred this summer. Finally, we do not think it is fair to try to compare this batting cage to a temporary ice hockey rink. Temporary hockey rinks are used in the winter when we are mostly inside, and they make less noise. My neighbors proposed to use their batting cage every year from March through October. In other words, they intend to use the batting cage at the same time we all want to be outside, and their intended use will con- conflict directly with my family's ability to use and enjoy our front porch. In conclusion, I would like to say I wish this had never come to a formal public hearing. I wish my neighbors had come to me and explained why they wanted and needed this batting cage. I wish they had said something like, quote, "We only want to have it up a few months this summer and maybe next summer while, while our son is in school, and we will work with you to use it at times that are okay with you", end quote. But they never did that. Instead, they put it up without asking anyone in the neighborhood or at village hall, and they are now belatedly asking the village to grant them, and all future owners, the right to erect and use a full-size batting cage on Elmwood Avenue whenever and however they see fit from March through October forever. We think, we just think this is wrong. Quite simply, this kind of activity belongs in a park or a schoolyard and not on the yard of a residence that fronts directly on Elmwood Avenue. For all these reasons, we have submitted, we respectfully ask the board and the village to deny the petition. Thank you for your time. Signed, Clifford Shapiro.
Thank you. Uh, and we still haven't heard from anyone else, right?
We, we did get six or seven support emails. I, I hope that's on the record. Uh, again, of, of the seven neighbors that expressed an opinion one way or the other, six of the seven were supportive of it, one was not. You just read the letter from the one that was not.
Thank you.
Um, Mr. Shapiro makes a, a couple of statements toward the end of that about, um, people being able to erect batting cages and use them forever. Um, I, I, I don't know that that's the case. Uh, and that's not, in my, not my understanding what we're approving or, or disproving this evening. Um, if, if the petition is approved, then this particular batting cage, uh, would be able to be used at this location and only at this location. Um, and it doesn't necessarily set a, a precedent for, um, uh, other properties and, and, um, batting cages. Is that true or not?
Sorry, you're asking me?
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, yeah, like all special uses, I think, uh, we would, um, ask the, ask the zoning board to consider this use to run with the use, uh, as opposed to with the land. So, um, I, I believe that if the applicant is represented, that it's going to be seasonal for, um, a, a limited number of years, that that would be, that would be it, because that's part of the application. And then, of course, um, when the use ceases, it, it, you know, can't be restarted.
So, this is John, Kelly. I have a couple of questions. Um, is your son playing baseball? Uh, he is, yeah. He's, um, he's on the, uh, the freshman, he made the freshman team last year, and he's, um, on the new cheer A team this summer.
Um, and, uh, I, I mean, so the, the season is typically a, uh, kind of what a spring in, in, I mean, in Illinois, spring. In the summer, does it even go into fall?
Uh, yeah, there is fall baseball. Yeah, it usually goes till it gets cold.
It goes till early October. There's a short fall ball season, very limited.
And, uh, the speaker that they, they talked about, what's that, what's that all about?
So there's, uh, yeah, there's a speaker outside, and again, I installed it three years ago when I moved there. And, you know, whether there's a batting cage there or not, which is, I think, what's the, the topic of discussion, um, there'll still be, there'll still be music there. Um, you know, I think any good neighbor will be respectful of his neighbors. Um, and so I would, you know, and, and believe me, when I hear the noise louder than it should be, I, I turn it down myself, or I, you know, do what most parents do. But, um, you know, again, that's, that's not relevant to the, to the batting cage. But, all right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Colleen. Uh, and hearing no other comments from, from others, um, I can close the testimony and ask for a motion.
Um, if you give me a minute, I'll make a motion.
Sure.
I'm moved to recommend granting a request for special use for unusual recreation equipment. A seventeen-point-eight-foot rear yard of a double frontage lot setback variation and a one-hundred-and-eighty-point-nine-nine or five-point-three-five-percent-square-foot rear yard of a double frontage lot impervious surface coverage variation to permit the retention of a seasonal batting cage at eleven-eleven Sheridan Road in accordance with the plan submitted. The zoning board must determine if the special use should run with the land or the use, and I believe Ms. Roberts indicated it would run with the use.
Second?
I'll second. Oh, John can second.
I'll second.
Okay. All right, uh, Mr. Pelletin, your motion?
Well, uh, I, yeah, I, I understand what Mr. Shapiro's points are. Um, I happen to disagree with, uh, several of them, um, in particular the one about the hockey rinks. Um, and, um, I, this is a large structure. It's a mostly, um, uh, not transparent structure, but, um, not a, an opaque structure. Um, and I think that, um, if the Hatzises, uh, are, are, um, able to, um, apprise the neighbors in generally of times, um, when their son would be interested in using this, um, or, or come to some sort of, um, uh, agreement with them about it, um, that's mutually acceptable, that I can't see any reason why this would be objectionable. Um, the impervious, impervious surface doesn't, to make a bad pun, doesn't hold any water with me, um, that, that objection. Um, and I, I don't, I think that there is a true hardship in this case in that there is no backyard, um, on, on this particular property. Um, so, uh, the, the, um, resident has no ability to put something up, um, in a backyard, uh, as, as defined by the village. Um, I, it's not, uh, overly tall. Um, and I think it's a, more of a, a lifestyle, uh, aspect of it than it is, um, a, the fact that the structure is going to, um, um, in some way diminish property value or, um, uh, cause problems, uh, within the village itself. Um, so I, I can support this. Um, I, 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 while I'm sympathetic about the, the noise and the disruption to the one person that objected, the fact that, um, all of the other neighbors, uh, are willing to, are able, are able to support it, um, somewhat outweighs that one objection.
Yeah, I, I agree with Mr. Pelletin. Um, um, you know, basically, you know, if this was, you know, something that was created to be a year-round structure, I think that would be a totally different type of situation. Uh, uh, you know, I, I think it's, um, you know, it's see-through. Yeah, I mean, you notice it's there, but it, it really doesn't punch you in the face or anything like that. You know, it'll be coming down, it'll be going back up, you know? Um, a full-time basketball court, basketball court can generate a lot more noise, I think, over the course of a year than something like this would. And I think it is more akin to a, a hockey rink. Um, and, you know, it won't be here three years from now, and, uh, their son, you know, loses interest or doesn't-
Or sooner.
Yeah, whatever, you know, I, I think, so, you know, for all, for all those reasons, I, I agree with Mr. Pelletin, and I can support it.
Okay, uh, this is Bob Sermon. Uh, Lisa, I have a couple more questions. Um, what if they were to put in a half-court basketball court? Would they do that if they're, uh, if the impervious wasn't an issue?
Um, not in that location, because it's basically like a front yard. So, sport courts are permitted, uh, basketball, tennis, but, um-
Swimming pool, small swimming pool?
Uh, not in that front yard area, yeah.
So I guess that gets to the point that it's really a, uh, a difficult lot to deal with, because you're restricted in so many ways. And I think this is a, a very minimal change. I guess I would like to see, what I'd like to not see is it become the neighborhood batting cage where people are lined up and, you know, all the friends are there, the whole team is there and all of that. Uh, that may be an issue with the neighborhood. But beyond that, I, I, um, agree with my colleagues.
Well, I guess that leaves me, um, and I, I am going to, um, object. And the reason is, I start off with, this is a front yard, and I am concerned about how people use front yards. Uh, I understand that it's, uh, temporary, but in this case, we are talking about three quarters of the year from March through October for this to be up and for it to be used as a ba- batting cage. So, yes, that's temporary by definition, but it's getting awfully close to permanent. When you've got three quarters of the year, and those are the years when we're outside. Um, I understand that they could put up a hockey rink, but people know that when you've got a hockey rink, it's going to be cold. Windows are going to be closed, and you're not going to be attempting to use your front porch or any other part of your house outside. You're going to be inside where it's going to be warm and it's going to be a whole lot quieter than outside. And you're also on a hot, on a hockey rink, skating rink, we'll call it, you're going to be skating. It's not a particularly noisy experience. I think the videos would suggest otherwise. I do appreciate when, for example, Bob says, "Well, we certainly hope that the neighbors aren't going to come by and use it, and other people are going to use it." We're all kind of saying, "Well, we got a problem with it, but gee, we certainly hope it won't ultimately be a problem." And I think that's not the right standard. The standard is, how can it be used during those eight months? And so what I did is I went back to section thirteen-point-four X of the village of Wilmet zoning ordinance, which is what provides us with the definition of the unusual recreation equipment. And it's a two-part definition. It's pretty simple. The first part is, "The installation and character of the equipment must reflect the scale and location of facilities generally accepted as usual and customary in single-family districts." I think we've seen all over the village basketball hoops, and I don't think anybody could argue about a basketball hoop. In the winter, we do actually see a fair number of skating rinks, and there's probably some argument, but a whole lot less argument about the skating rink. But this is unique, particularly when I was interested in whether or not other people have in their front yards, because this is a front yard, any way you can call it whatever you want, it's a front yard, to have a batting cage in the front yard on Elmwood. Uh, I don't think this is in keeping with the character of Elmwood as it appears, uh, as it, you know, along, all along, uh, Wilmette, throughout Wilmette. The second part of the definition of an unusual recreation equipment is, "The level and duration of noise produced by the use of such equipment must reflect that which is accepted and usual and customary in single-family neighborhoods." I think there's a reason why the village put up a batting cage in a place like Thornwood Park. If you look at where it's at, it's right next to the tennis courts. You already got pounding noise from the tennis courts, and they put it sort of central to Thornwood Park. They didn't put it right up next to where the neighbors are located or where the backyards of those neighbors are located. Uh, I think they understood that it's one of those things that you just don't expect to hear during a nice summer evening. It's not the level and duration of noise produced by, which, which is reflective of the usual and customary noise in single-family neighborhoods. This is a unique sound. And again, Lisa, well, how about wood bats? Boy, this is getting tougher. We're trying to now regulate- We're trying to now regulate, don't have the neighbors, just your son, don't use a little, we go on, and that's not the purpose, I think, of the usual, unusual recreation equipment. The other section of the Villagable Met Zoning Ordinance that I took a look at was five point four F, which gives us the standard for a variation, and it tells us that no variation may be recommended for approval unless findings have been made to support each of the following conclusions, and I won't go through all of them, but that means that we have to make certain findings in order to approve this use. And the first is that the particular physical condition, shape, or surroundings of the property would impose upon the owner a practical difficulty or particular hardship, as opposed to a mere inconvenience. I appreciate that the Hatzases' son doesn't yet drive. By, by, by next summer, I suspect he will be sixteen and will be driving, and pretty much this summer, he's gotten away with getting to use the batting cage by having the village come to the Hatzases and then say, "You need to have this scheduled." He's gotten lucky, it's now not even going to be in front of the village board until September, so this summer is pretty well taken care of. But it's not as if there are no batting cages anywhere in the village. There is one, it's in Thornwood, I don't live too far from that, and it is rarely used by the kids in Willmette or whoever else would be using it. But the important thing is that the burden is on the applicant to show the real hardship. Uh, secondly, part D of five point four F says, "The difficulty or hardship resulting from the application of this ordinance would prevent the owner from making a reasonable use of the property." This isn't a neighbor saying, "You can't use that part of the property for a patio, or for a party, or for the wedding, or whatever it might be." This is saying that the owner can still use this in every way he or she or they want to use it, but not for the unusual recreation equipment. Finally, five point four FF says, "The variation, if granted, will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood." I think this does. When you put in the front yard a structure as big as this, and I realize that it's fairly, you know, you can see through it, it's netting, but I think it sets a very dangerous precedent, even if it only runs with the use. So, for those reasons, I do have problems with the requested, um, variants.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, this is Bob Sermon. Could I ask Lisa one more question before you finalize your thoughts? Uh, Lisa, so if this was to go in the backyard of a neighbor, uh, it would have to be a special use?
Yes, we would call that a special use.
Okay, so somebody else would, in the backyard, would still have to apply? Okay. Um, because I, you know, I see Brad's points, and, uh, I guess one thing as a board, we have to remember is the direction that the village has given us is that we need to, uh, when people come back after the fact and make a request, uh, pleading for forgiveness, we have to address the issue really as if it's a brand-new case. It hasn't been built or assembled, and we have to make a decision based on that. So, you know, it's, it's really, how would you handle this if it wasn't built yet? Would you allow it or wouldn't? So, uh, I'm still on the fence on this one, so, thank you, Chairman.
Ryan Hart? I think you're submuted. Um, you know, Ryan Hart, before you go, I was just going to say that, um, you know, basically, um, I, I think we all agree that the impervious surface doesn't really apply here, and, um, you know, this, this is a, not like a shed or other things that had been put up, and then people came and asked for forgiveness, and had to take down, you know, the shed, or, like, there's a two-story shed at one point in time that had to get taken down, or this is a temporary structure, it's not a permanent structure, it wasn't meant to be a permanent structure.
Thank you. I, um, they're all good comments. Um, first, um, the issue of backyard versus front yard, um, and recognizing this unusual lot, uh, and no other place to put it, but going back to, if this were in a, in a backyard, a normal backyard where you had neighbors on three sides, including maybe across the street, if you count that, but on three sides, which are in greater proximity than this particular neighbor is that it's objecting, um, so I don't understand why a backyard would be better located than, this is from a, from an intrusive noise intrusion perspective. So, secondly, I, I understand that the applicant probably should have asked for permission. Maybe I, I trust that he really didn't think that that was necessary. Well, when I went by there, I literally almost missed it. I had to walk back because it was so unobtrusive to me, anyway. Um, in terms of the noise, uh, I have, we have neighbors who have a basketball court down their driveway that goes to the back, to the garage in the backyard, and have a basketball hoop, and, and they play it on the driveway, and, uh, I assure you that the noise of the basketball and the children that play it, and, which is, to me, is a kind of a pleasant noise. It's not a, I have no objection to it, but it is, it is relatively loud, and for some people may be objectionable. So, I am, uh, you know, there used to be a volleyball court, bat mitten court, the, the trampoline, these are all recreational equipment that is temporary most of the time, including Mr. Sermon's trampoline, which hopefully at some point he will take down.
It's being removed this weekend. Someone wants it with, that has younger kids.
I, I just, and again, the, the issue of the impervious surface is not an issue, and so we're just dealing with the fact that this is a structure, um, is deemed to be a structure, uh, that has, that's been anchored into the ground, and therefore needs the variation. Um, so I, for all those reasons, I am, I, I can support this. Uh, is there more other comments? I think, uh, Lisa, can we take a vote?
Mr. Pelletin?
Yes.
Mr. Coling?
Yes.
Mr. Falco?
No.
Uh, Mr. Sermon?
Yes.
Chairman Schneider?
Yes, and so this will go with a, as a positive recommendation to the zoning board, to the Board of Trustees on August, on August twenty-five, and, uh, I suspect they may want to discuss it, you, so you may want to be there.
Yeah, we will, thank you.
We need to do a, another...
Move to authorize the chairman to review the report and the recommendations for the zoning board of appeals for case number twenty twenty dash Z dash twenty-two.
Have a second?
Second.
Please call the, the names.
Mr. Falco?
Yes.
Mr. Coling?
Yes.
Mr. Pelletin?
Yes.
Mr. Sermon?
Yes.
Chairman Schneider?
Yes. So, thank you very much, um, everyone.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
We can now go to the last case of the evening.
Okay, we'll drop out, thank you all.
Thank you.
Good night.
Thank you.
Next case, Ms. Roberts, we're all set.
Our next case is twenty twenty Z twenty, ten ten Central Avenue. This is a request for a special use for an adaptive reuse senior housing fifty-five-plus development, a zero point five seven floor area ratio variation, a nine point two nine foot front yard setback variation, a nine point two six foot west side yard setback variation, a six point seven four foot west side yard setback variation, a west side yard deck setback variation, a nine point nine three foot height variation, an eight point seven seven foot parapet height variation, a six point six five foot elevator housing height variation, a six point zero three foot air conditioner condenser height variation, a two point one five foot rear yard north parking space setback variation, a one thousand two hundred and eighty-four square foot rear yard total impervious surface coverage variation, a two thousand five hundred and seventy-four square foot rear yard pavement impervious surface coverage variation, and a variation from the requirement that fifty percent of the required parking spaces be enclosed, all to permit the modification of the existing building into a sixteen-unit apartment development and associated site improvements.
Could you repeat that again? I didn't hear it.
Uh, is, is the applicant here?
Yes, this is Steve, I'm with, uh, the ownership group.
Uh, yeah, hi, Chris Talzma, I'm, uh, Steve's architect.
Could you put on the video?
Yes, sir.
Whoever was speaking, and I assume you've all been sworn in, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Okay, great. Thank you, go ahead, proceed.
So, we purchased the, uh, the Masonic Lodge about two months ago, and our plans are to convert it into a sixteen-unit, uh, fifty-five-plus senior development. Um, we plan to basically gut the interior down to the studs, um, you know, remove everything out, and, you know, rebuild all-new inside. On the exterior, we're really trying not to do too much. Um, the front facade that faces central, um, there will be no modifications. Um, on the other sides of the building, there will be some, uh, window openings, uh, added just to make the, the units functional, and, uh, decks and stairs on the east and west side for, uh, all of the units. Um, I think the big thing with all our variants is, uh, the existing structure just in itself does not comply with, you know, the, the zoning district, um, but besides the decks, there, there really are no modifications being made to the, to the building itself.
I just, I just had a general question, uh, for Steve. You know, uh, could you tell us about other projects you've done that are similar, or is this...
Uh, I mean, similar I've, I've done in the city, um, I, I was involved in the group that did a eleven twenty-one green leaf, um, like a block away, we completed that about two years ago.
Okay.
Um, but I, I've worked on a number of rehabilitation projects, uh, in the city.
Sure, okay, thank you.
Any, any questions, any other questions for the applicant?
Yes, sir. I had one question. Um, when it says that it's fifty-five plus, does that still, what is that by definition? I noticed that these are three bedrooms. Does that mean that it's a retired couple with a lot of extra bedrooms, or could a family move in?
A family, I mean, the, one, one of the applicants, one of the tenants has to be fifty-five or over.
I'm usually, usually with tenants, so these are all rentals?
These will be rentals, yes.
Okay.
But, yeah, we, we tried to, to keep them, you know, all three-bedroom, too bad, we want to, uh, we want to market to, to families, um, you know. At our other project, we had a, a lot of people who had lived in the area for, you know, twenty, thirty years, sold their house, um, but, you know, want to stay local, and this is a, a great option for them.
So, how many units per floor?
There are four per floor.
So, I, I, and question, uh, the plans that we have received is, they're reduced to eleven and a half, eleven by eight and a half, so they're not that clear, but the plans we have received, uh, are these the final plans?
From a unit layout, yes. Um, we're still, I mean, we're in construction documents right now, so there could be a couple of, you know, minor adjustments here and there, but I'd call them, you know, from a planned perspective, ninety-five percent.
So, you're, you're closing the front entrance, right? The current front entrance to the building?
Well, yeah, on the, if you, you know, there's that, there's, you're pretty familiar with the building, I assume?
Yeah, we worked around it.
Okay, so, on, on the alley side, there is a...
I'm, I'm talking about the, the, the front, the current front entrance on the, on, on the central side.
Yeah, there's, so there's two entrances. There's one that's set back a little bit further than, than the one that's on the very front facade. There's a small bay on the west side, I'm, yeah, on the west side, on the alley side. So, that's...
Can you look at one point one seven for me, please? One point one seven.
I mean, I guess the simple answer to your question is yes, however, there are two front entrances, one we're maintaining, one we're, we're, we're closing.
Well, those, no, there's, there's three, so there's, there's, there's a side entrance, um, on the west side of the property that's set back off of the front facade, that, that's going to be our main entrance. It's a, it's a covered entrance.
I see that. Are you looking at, can you show me the, can you...
Ryan Hart, if you look at one point three, um, you can, it's the plat of survey, you can see the, uh, both entrances, with the sidewalks leading from Central Avenue.
Hold on, I'm going on.
So, there's one and there's two, right?
Yeah, so the, the two front entrances, the, the two on the front facade will, those will be closed up, our, our only entrance will be along the west side of the building, recessed from the facade.
On the alley?
Yes, pretty, yes.
Basically, under, uh, underneath those decks that you will install, correct?
No, no, it'll, no, very small.
I, I, I got it, I got it.
Okay.
Oh, go ahead, Ryan Hart, sorry.
So, you will have one entrance, just another question, I, I know you're going to be, the building code people will obviously have to approve this, but I'm just curious, there was a reference that you will have a stairs on the north side of the building. That's not, you're just having an exit stair from the basement, is that right?
No, well, so we, we've actually, um, we, we had an informal presentation with the ARC at the end of, uh, June, um, and we just presented a, a round of designs in response to some of the comments that we received. So, you know, we submitted the initial drawings to Lisa at the same time, and those did have a egress stair at the north, um, but in response to the ARC comments, we, you know, came up with some alternate designs, which put us with two exit stairs, one on the east, one on the west.
And how are the exit stairs on, on the various floors accessed through, so sliding doors or something?
Um, each, each unit has its own deck, that's, you know, so we're providing outdoor space for each unit, and then, so, there's basically, you know, one deck per unit, per floor, so four decks, um, and then the two that are, you know, side by side have access to, uh, the stair that would take you out, so that's your, that's your, that's your egress stair, um, so that's the second way that, um, occupants can get out.
Okay, so, you, you're asking for a side yard setback variation, I think on the west side, if I'm not messing this up?
That's correct.
And in part, that is created because of the depth of the deck that you are, why does the deck have to be that, that, uh, deep?
Well, a couple of reasons. Um, I mean, first of all, you, you know, as Steve pointed out before, the very nature of the building makes it non-compliant in many regards, which is the, the first reason we're here. Um, you know, it's too tall, it's, uh, all these reasons.
I got it.
And there is a portion of the building on the west side that, um, you know, does encroach into that setback already. So, so, you know, without the decks, we would have to seek that variation. If I'm not mistaken, Lisa could correct me, I, I did notice that in, in, in the request, there's a s... I did notice that in the request, there's a specification for decks. You know, she calls out the deck setback, but that little entry lobby, you know, is too close to the lot line as well. But, to continue, because of some of the existing openings that we have on that building, there's, you know, there's one, two, three, four large two-story openings at grade that we're going to, we're going to leave. Those are going to be maintained. And then, to try to get that stair to fit someplace that doesn't become, you know, doesn't obstruct those openings, leaves us with just a couple of locations. So, you know, we're trying to position the stair in a way that, that, you know, stays out of those windows as much as possible. So, rotating them in this configuration allows us to do that. And just the code minimums of the stairs have given us those dimensions. So, you know, they're no bigger than they, than they need to be. We'd like to make them smaller, but for them to qualify as a second means of egress, they need to be these dimensions.
One more question on the parking. Were you asking for a setback on the north, north edge of your property, which normally is five feet to the curb, I guess, of the parking, parking spaces? You're asking for a two-foot variation. Is that because you need a minimum space between the north, the northern row of parking spaces and the south? You just need to be able to maneuver, you need those extra two feet?
Yes, sir. These are the, kind of the minimum dimensions that qualify as a parking. So, we've, we've made it as small as possible while being able to provide the parking that we need to.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Yeah, this is Bob, sir, and I have a question for Chris. How is it that you only have one internal stair? What, I looked through the IBC, and I couldn't find anything that said that you could only have one stairway?
The two, the ex, you can do an exterior stair.
Stairs, yours, second means of exit, that's why we have the outdoor.
But don't those stairs have to be enclosed? Typically, they have...
No.
Really? And at what point does it? Because it's very similar to a fire escape. I mean, they, they had fire escapes originally to solve that, but what gets you out of...
Well, there's, yeah, there are limits to it. We couldn't, you couldn't do this on a high-rise. This building is short enough that we can get away with that.
Okay, but I saw in the IBC that you, it had to be protected. You know, it couldn't be an area where snow and ice could accumulate.
Right, so, and I'll be honest. So, we, 90%, of my work is in Chicago. So, we're, you know, my, 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 my general perspective is Chicago code, and of course, you know, thankfully, we're now IBCs, more or less, so I'm going to, you know, get more familiar with it. We did submit a plan initially to, Steve, remind me, Steve's our plan examiner, Scott Byrd, you know, with these outdoor stairs, and that wasn't an issue that he raised. And it was specifically why we brought the design to him early on, because I was, I wanted to make sure that we weren't pitching something that wasn't going to get anywhere once we submitted these initial plans to him.
Typically, any space, even with the Chicago building code, any space that's over, you know, a certain area, you have to have. It just, I guess it's unusual, maybe it's because I've done high-rises and I haven't done a low-rise. I just, when I saw that, and then, if you say, and I know these are architectural issues, but that impacts the variance to, on the west side, by having this.
Certainly, certainly.
So, so that was my concern. Also, I saw a lot of other things that didn't appear to be code-related in Chicago or there. So, but I, you know, if these are 95%, I guess, you know, like area of refuge, are you required to have that?
There's one in there.
In the stair?
Yeah, yeah.
I don't see it, okay. And then, you know, the eight, it's not, stairs aren't ADA compliant?
Sure they are.
The door, the, the, what? They are?
Yeah.
Well, you and I will have to agree to disagree, because they're not. I'm a, so I don't have to get into my experience, but, you know, you can't have the door swinging into the landings. Now, these are architectural issues, but...
But feel free.
Okay, okay, but, but I'm concerned about the stairway. I'm concerned about the stairway.
The doors do swing into the landings, but there is adequate room to have the handrail extensions? If that's what you're concerned about?
No, I'm concerned about circulation. If that door is swinging open to circulate...
No, there's, there are rules about how much you can, I mean, it sounds to me like perhaps an architect as well?
Yes.
You are an architect in Illinois, so you're familiar with these things?
Yeah.
I've been doing it for 20 years, so I'm not, I'm not fresh off.
As long as, as long as it meets the codes. I just, it's, some of the stuff is new to me. So, if you say it meets the code, I'm good with that. And if those outside stairs, so I don't have an issue then.
Okay.
So, it's your project.
Say, Chris, I have a quick question. You were talking about some variances on the west side. That's the alley side, isn't it?
Yes, sir.
So, i-if there's going to be any sort of complaint about that, it's not going to come from a landowner who is on the east side or the north side? It's going to be on the alley side?
That's right.
Okay, that's what I need to know. Thank you.
Another question. Question for the applicant. Just out of curiosity, how long has this facility been vacant?
I mean, I don't think, I don't think they've really used it in 15 years, is kind of what we've heard. I mean, it's in, it's in not great shape inside.
It's been used for special events regularly, up until the last couple of years.
Yeah, I think I was there for an event maybe five or six years ago. But it was just a single, one evening event.
Just a notice, when Brad Falco and I were there, on the east side, on the first floor, there was an open window, and you may want to check on that, because I don't think we want people to go in there and...
Yeah, will do, thank you.
And another, this is just an aside. You mentioned down to the studs. Is the interior timber, wood construction?
Yes.
Floors?
Yes.
Floors are wood?
Floors are wood.
Joists, et cetera. And the columns?
There's some, there is, there is, it's a combination. There's, there's steel, there's steel as well as wood. I mean, all the joists are wood, but the beams, the major supporting structure is iron.
Interesting. And another point that maybe Lisa, you can, you can bring some background to this special adaptive reuse senior housing 55-plus development. That arose from Mallinckrodt, right, Lisa, can you give us some background?
Yes, we, the village was, you know, obviously Mallinckrodt was a significant issue when it came on the market and got a lot of attention. When the special use was created, there was consideration given for facilities like the Masonic Lodge that may have, may eventually suffer the same fate. And so, we retained that use into the new 2014 ordinance. And certainly, when the masons in the last year or two, when we were trying to get ahold of them, we were trying to accommodate them in any way we could. So, if we didn't have this use, we would have made it for them.
Thank you, thank you. Any other questions for the applicant?
Yeah, this is Bob, sir, and I have another question regarding the impervious. They're asking for a fairly large impervious area variation, and I'm not sure how the village is dealing with that, but in many of the recent projects, they've asked for some sort of retainage system on the site when you're over, as much as this, to...
You know, I didn't, I didn't look into exactly myself what the codes are here, but I reached out to an engineer that we work with for Civil and showed them the plans to see if we needed to contract it on the size of the project, and they said so. So, I took her word for it, that she, you know, when she turned the work down, sure, wasn't, wasn't lying to me. Now, there might be some other issues that are raised through this process, but like, if it was, if it wasn't going to zoning, I don't think anything would come up regarding retention or detention.
Lisa, would this be a situation where the village engineer would get involved? Or is it not a requirement?
Sorry, what issues? I mean, I, based on the size of the coverage, the engineering department will want to take a grading permit for it. So, my guess would be that some sort of catch basin system restrictor might be required. I don't believe it's large enough of a property to trigger the typical MWRD standards, but I imagine there'll be some sort of drainage requirements applied, but nothing, I don't think anything extraordinary.
Okay, thank you.
As of now, all the, all the downstairs just funnel down to the ground. They're none of, none of them to the sewer line.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, Lisa, have, do we have anybody on the line which is to comment, or have we received any?
We had one guest who had to leave. He did not submit, I'm sorry, he had submitted an email that was in your packet after that. But no new emails, and nobody in chat. Kate, was there anybody on YouTube?
Uh, no, there are no comments on YouTube.
Thank you. We also have a, got a report from Benish, which was, Benish Engineering was requested by the village to study the traffic issues. I assume we've all read that, and I guess the conclusion was that it would be less than the previous use whenever that occurred, I think, 10, 15 years ago, when it was used as a lot. And so, then they modeled it as based on senior adult housing occupancy, and it looks like the load on the alley, I don't think is not very significant. Or not seriously impacted. And hearing no other comments from anyone else, I guess we can close testimony, and if you have anything just to add, applicant?
Ryan, I have one more question.
Sure.
Relating to parking, how many, the only parking will be in the back there?
Yes.
And how many spaces?
Eighteen spaces.
Are they going to be dedicated spaces just per unit? Or anybody can park anywhere?
No, we will, we'll assign spaces to individual units.
So, that visitors will be parking on the street?
Visitors will typically be parking on the street, yes.
And we got one letter from Mr. Teasdale, who lives at, just to the east, at 1004 Central. Have you, or has anybody responded to his questions?
No, we have not yet.
All right, are you, his email?
Yeah, I have a copy of it. I'm happy to reach out to him.
I mean, in lieu of my going through all of his questions and asking you for the answers?
Oh, yes.
I would appreciate if that, that could happen.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you. So, I can close the testimony and ask for a motion.
I'll make a motion unless somebody else is interested in doing so.
Pelton.
I have to find the thing, hold on one second. Sorry.
You're going to have to read the whole thing again.
Since I was teaching Ms. Roberts about reading the whole thing, I'll, I'll take a crack.
I got it, I got it.
I move to recommend grading request for a special use for an adaptive reuse senior housing 55-plus development, a 0.577 area ratio variation, a 9.29 foot front yard setback variation, a 9.26 foot west yard setback variation, a 6.74 foot west side yard stair setback variation, a west side yard deck setback variation, a 9.93 foot height variation, an 8.77 foot parapet height variation, a 0.65 foot elevator housing height variation, a 6.03 foot air conditioner condenser height variation, a 2.15 foot rear yard north parking space setback variation, a 1,280 square foot, 84 square foot or 29.8% rear yard total impervious surface coverage variation, a 2,574 square foot or 59.8% rear yard pavement impervious impervious surface coverage variation, and a variation from the requirement that 50% of the required parking spaces being closed to permit the modification of the existing building into a 16-unit apartment development and associated site improvements at 1010 Central Avenue in accordance with the plan submitted. The zoning board must determine if the special use should run with the land or the use.
I would think it would go with the use, would you agree with that?
Yes.
And we have a second? Second? Thank you. Mr. Pelton, your motion?
Well, I actually am, have been in the building many times and am personally acquainted with lots of the neighbors who live on top. This is very unusual in that it's been not well-kept up, not well-maintained for quite a long time now. And in addition to that, perhaps fortunately for the owners, two of the immediately adjoining properties have been vacant for years and years, and one has now been demolished and rebuilt, but is still vacant, as the owners are trying to sell it. So, the most immediate neighbors, with the exception of the people at 1004 and 1006, are not present or not terribly interested in what's going on. The other neighbors in the more extended area are very much in favor of this development or any positive use, constructive use of this building. And I think it would be a tremendous benefit to the, to the village. I do have concerns about the impervious surface coverage variation. I've never seen one that is anywhere, you know, close to this almost 60% that they're asking for relief for. But otherwise, I, I think that the, the rest of, while there are many different variation requests, they're all fairly small, and certainly makes sense for a project of this size and this particular use. I also feel that there is a definite need for this kind of property within the village. I've heard that from village trustees in the past. And so, I, I think that it makes sense for us to consider these variations in that light, or variation requests in that light. And if the village, you know, if Lisa and the village engineers are able to work out water drainage and retention issues to satisfy the, the impervious surface coverage issues, then I think that this is a good use and a project that I can recommend.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, I agree with Mr. Pelton. I mean, you know, basically, the impervious surface coverage is there now. And, you know, if you're, if you're going to have 16 units, you're going to need the parking. So, unless the village engineers say there's some type of retainage they have to put in place, there really isn't going to be a change. You know, I've driven by this building forever, been living, well, about 40 years I've driven by it forever. I didn't really take a good look at it until today, and obviously, it's pretty rundown. And, but it's, it's a great facade when you're driving up Central Street, and would be a shame to lose, I think, that feature. So, this seems to me to be a really positive way, readaptive use, and it's close to the Village Center, it's close to transportation, so people who live there, you know, can utilize the Village Center and the train system, they want to do. And so, I think it's, it's an excellent project, and I can support this.
Thank you. Any other comments from others?
I just, I, can I ask the applicant one quick question? Is the building... Is the building sprinkler?
Current yield, but we, we will, we will fully sprinkle the building.
You will, okay.
Yeah.
All right, no, I think it's a great project. I think it's a good use for the building. You know, and it's, would be a shame to tear it down, like John said, so I can support it. I just, I still have, being an architect, probably this happens all the time, but I still have issues with travel distances and magnets and all of that. But I imagine in the final set, I'll review all of it, so I can support it.
I also can support, I think it's a, a beautiful reuse. I mean, a building like this, there aren't that many around like it. I think it's gonna have a positive impact on the community, given its size and location. And in fact, there is a real need. And so I think it's here to be commended for taking the, taking a shot at it, because there's not gonna be much left when you're done, other than truly the outside. So you've got a lot of work to do, but have a lot of luck with it.
Thank you. Mr. Sermon? My architectural license from Texas lapsed a long time ago, so I have no, I'm not qualified to comment as you are.
Okay, well, I don't, I don't state that, I don't know how qualified I am either, so I'm not gonna say.
I, I don't wanna overstate my qualifications, so.
No, I think we're all, we all want the right end product, and we all wanna be covered and everything else, so. Yeah, I do this too often, I think, I bring up architectural issues and I could easily be wrong, so.
I, I hope that bird will catch it.
When, when the comment was made, that, that the runoff from the roof currently goes via downspouts onto the grounds. And I would hope the engineer would make sure that we're not adding additional load to the combined sewer system on the east side, which, which would be a problem. So I, Lisa, I assume the, the engineer's gonna pay attention to that and not increase the rain, the runoff on our, on the sewer system. And I, I agree, you know, this is R two zoning, normally clearly, and this, only townhouses would be permitted or duplexes, but given this, this special provision and the situation and nature of it, and the fact that the community in general accepts it, I can also approve it. Can we take a vote?
Mr. Pelleton?
Yes.
Mr. Kaling?
Yes.
Mr. Falcoff?
Yes.
Mr. Sermon?
Yes.
Chairman Schneider?
Yes. So this is a recommendation, does a recommendation to the village board on August seventy-five, so I'm sure you want to be there, I'm sure they all want to talk about it. Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good luck. Take care.
Bring it in under budget, please, yes.
Move to authorize the chairman to prepare the report and recommendation for the zoning board of appeals for case number twenty twenty dash Z dash twenty.
Second.
Mr. Falcoff?
Yes.
Mr. Kaling?
Yes.
Mr. Pelleton?
Yes.
Mr. Sermon?
Yes.
Chairman Schneider?
Yes.
Move to approve the meeting minutes for the zoning board of appeals for Wednesday, June twenty-fourth, twenty twenty.
Second.
You got ahead of me, hang on. Uh, Mr. Falcoff?
Yes.
Mr. Kaling?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Pelleton?
Yes.
Mr. Sermon?
Yes.
Chairman Schneider?
Yes.
Is there anyone out there that wishes to comment about anything? Please raise your hands or your face, do we have anybody?
I don't believe we have anybody not already here for-
How do you raise your face?
Sorry about that. Okay, I, I, I move to adjourn, do we have to vote on that?
Yes, we just, we did, a motion, a second please.
Second.
Uh, Mr. Falcoff?
Yes.
Mr. Kaling?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Pelleton?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Sermon?
Yes.
And Chairman Schneider?
Yes.
Okay.
So we are adjourned, thank you, thank you very much.